Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, January 14th, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, it is just past 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as you know, we have a number of special presentations and introductions. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Miss Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask some of our guests to join me here today from Qantas Airways. Members, if you've been listening to the radio like I've been listening to the radio, you are probably already aware that next week, January 15th through the 22nd in L.A. is Good Day L.A., Australia Week in L.A. This is an effort sponsored by Qantas Airways to strengthen the ties between Australia and Los Angeles, and they are partnering with the Australian Council General Tourism Australia and Australia. And we have here a taste of what members of the public and members of the city family and actually those in Southern California will be able to see, literally a taste of Australia. Qantas, I'm very, very pleased to recognize them as an airline, as the major sponsor of this event, this week-long event which has actually numbers of events that'll be part of it, because of its commitment to business and tourism and its made a significant economic contribution to Los Angeles. As we all know, Qantas Airways is a global air carrier, offering services to many destinations in over 32 countries. Recently, Qantas celebrated 50 years of continuous flying between the North American continent and Australia with more non-stop flights to Australia and New Zealand than any other carrier. Los Angeles is the second-ranked U.S. destination of Qantas Airlines, and I think we've just got to work to make it the first U.S. destination. But as a consequence of just being at second-ranked, they operate more flights to Los Angeles International Airport than any other international airline. They flew more than 900,000 passengers to and from Los Angeles. And what that means for us is not only are we bringing people to L.A. and tourism, which I know Mr. LeBonde is paying close attention to because that's his heart and soul, but it also has an incredible economic impact and benefit to our region. Over $3 billion is contributed to L.A. economy as a consequence of this business, not to mention the cargo and other trade opportunities. Qantas obviously recognizes the benefits of shared business and trade opportunities and tourism, and so that's why they were very pleased to be the major sponsor of this second annual Good Day L.A., Australia Week in L.A. opportunity. I will introduce people from Qantas here to tell you about some of the things that will be happening, but as I said, there's going to be an awful lot going on, cultural, business events, showcasing events, a gala black tie dinner, something with Greg Norman at El Caballero Country Club on golfing and potential investment opportunities. But to give us a taste of what's going to be going on throughout this region in the next week, Qantas has actually brought us two benefits today in terms of other than being here themselves. To allow us to see a taste of Australian culture, Qantas Airways has flown in 20 young women from the Qantas Australian Girls Choir, and they are here today and they're actually going to perform singing "I Still Call Australia Home." And then afterwards, for those of you who want to sneak in the back, there's going to be a literal taste of Australia because there's some food in the back of Australian foods that are there for us all to sample, but that's just the tidbit today. It's all week long, these kinds of opportunities and events and festivals are going to be going on throughout the region in different areas so that members of our public can taste this and benefit itself. So as a consequence of this, I would like to introduce and present with me is Howard Goldberg, who's with Qantas Airways Vice President of Sales. We tried to get the Australian Council General here as well, but because of this event in this week, his schedule is very, very booked and he wasn't able to join us. But we also have Agnes Huff and Anna Jordan, who are helping Qantas present this throughout the region. Terry Gagessi is also here from Qantas Airways, and we have Jeff Barash, their photographer. So to Mr. Goldberg, let me say thank you for what you're doing and the continued good neighbor relationships we have, and we are very, very appreciative of what you're doing and really look forward to participating in many of these events throughout the week, not only as council members, but I think as members of our public as well. So thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you very much.
It's here from Mr. LeBonde.
Sikowski, thank you for recognizing Qantas. I had the fortune of one day coming to your country and flying Qantas, and it was good to see the beautiful country of Australia, and it's a great partner of the United States. And I thank Australia for their great, as a citizen of the world, their great contribution to the issues related to the tsunami in South Asia. Australia, for all of us, if we ever have an opportunity to get there, it's as if you were in Los Angeles in some parts, at least in the 1950s. It's a truly interesting part to see Australia and its many wonders and beauties of the area, especially Surf's Paradise is awfully nice.
Thank you, Sikowski. Now you've taken all of my remarks. Thank you very much. Well, we're very honored, very, very much. Thank you very much, Councilman Sikowski, for this wonderful honor. And Qantas is committed to strengthening ties between America and Australia, and I'm going to make a new commitment to make
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, January 14th, 2005. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Colleagues, it is just past 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as you know, we have a number of special presentations and introductions. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask some of our guests to join me here today from Qantas Airways. Members, if you've been listening to the radio, like I've been listening to the radio, you are probably already aware that next week, January 15th through the 22nd in L.A. is Good Day L.A., Australia Week in L.A. This is an effort sponsored by Qantas Airways to strengthen the ties between Australia and Los Angeles. And they are partnering with the Australian Council General, Tourism Australia, and Austrade. And we have here a taste of what members of the public and members of the city family, and actually those in Southern California, will be able to see, literally a taste of Australia. Qantas, I'm very, very pleased to recognize them as an airline, as the major sponsor of this event, this week-long event, which has actually numbers of events that'll be part of it, because of its commitment to business and tourism, and it's made a significant economic contribution to Los Angeles. As we all know, Qantas Airways is a global air carrier, offering services to many destinations in over 32 countries. Recently, Qantas celebrated 50 years of continuous flying between the North American continent and Australia, with more non-stop flights to Australia and New Zealand than any other carrier. Los Angeles is the second-ranked U.S. destination of Qantas Airlines, and I think we've just got to work to make it the first U.S. designation, the destination. But as a consequence of just being at second-ranked, they operate more flights to Los Angeles International Airport than any other international airline. They flew more than 900,000 passengers to and from Los Angeles. And what that means for us is not only are we bringing people to L.A. and tourism, which I know Mr. Labange is paying close attention to, because that's his heart and soul, but it also has an incredible economic impact and benefit to our region. Over $3 billion is contributed to L.A. economy as a consequence of this business, not to mention the cargo and other trade opportunities. Qantas obviously recognizes the benefits of shared business and trade opportunities and tourism, and so that's why they were very pleased to be the major sponsor of this second annual Good Day L.A., Australia Week in L.A. opportunity. I will introduce people from Qantas here to tell you about some of the things that will be happening, but as I said, there's going to be an awful lot going on, cultural, business events, showcasing events, a gala black tie dinner, something with Greg Norman at El Caballero Country Club on golfing and potential investment opportunities. But to give us a taste of what's going to be going on throughout this region in the next week, Qantas has actually brought us two benefits today, in terms of, other than being here themselves. To allow us to see a taste of Australian culture, Qantas Airways has flown in 20 young women from the Qantas Australian Girls Choir, and they are here today and they're actually going to perform, singing "I Still Call Australia Home." And then afterwards, for those of you who want to sneak in the back, there's going to be a literal taste of Australia, because there's some food in the back of Australian foods that are there for us all to sample. But that's just the tidbit today. It's all week long, these kinds of opportunities and events and festivals are going to be going on throughout the region in different areas, so that members of our public can taste this and benefit itself. So as a consequence of this, I would like to introduce and present with me is Howard Goldberg, who's with Qantas Airways, Vice President of Sales. We tried to get the Australian Council General here as well, but because of this event in this week, his schedule is very, very booked, and he wasn't able to join us. But we also have Agnes Huff and Anna Jordan, who are helping Qantas present this throughout the region. Terry Gagessi is also here from Qantas Airways, and we have Jeff Barash, their photographer. So to Mr. Goldberg, let me say thank you for what you're doing and the continued good neighbor relationships we have, and we are very, very appreciative of what you're doing and really look forward to participating in many of these events throughout the week, not only as council members, but I think as members of our public as well. So thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's your from Mr. Labange.
Sikowski, thank you for recognizing Qantas. I had the fortune of one day coming to your country and flying Qantas, and it was good to see the beautiful country of Australia, and it's a great partner of the United States. And I thank Australia for their great, as a citizen in the world, their great contribution to the issues related to the tsunami in South Asia. Australia, for all of us, if we ever have an opportunity to get there, it's as if you were in Los Angeles in some parts, at least in the 1950s. It's a truly interesting part to see Australia and its many wonders and beauties of the area, and especially Surf's Paradise is awfully nice.
Thank you, Sikowski.
Thank you.
Now you've taken all of my remarks. Thank you very much. Well, we're very honored, very, very much. Thank you very much, Councilman Ms. Sikowski, for this wonderful honor. And Qantas is committed to strengthening ties between America and Australia. And I'm going to make a new commitment to make sure that Los Angeles is the number-one destination for Australians. We're so happy to be here, and Australia Week is an opportunity for us to really show our Los Angeles friends the ties between Australia and Los Angeles.
Oh, purple mountain majesties, above the fruited bay.
As a taste of Australia, we have had some of our famous chefs put together some wonderful things to eat, and the council will share in those afterwards.
America, America, God shed His grace on thee.
And I just wanted to say that we were so happy we were able to bring up representatives
And crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea.
of the Qantas Australia Girls Choir, who actually consists of 3,000 young ladies. And these are representatives from the choir, and they're going to be helping us celebrate
Oh, beautiful, for pilgrims feet who stir in passion stress.
Australia Week. But today, we've actually asked them, instead of singing "I Call Australia Home," they're going to sing one of my favorite songs, "America the Beautiful," so for the council to enjoy.
A thoroughfare for freedom beat across the wilderness.
All right.
And thank you very much, all of you very much.
All right, let's ask the young ladies to join us up here and give us a taste of Australia.
America, America, God grant thine every flaw.
I love that color.
Confirm thy soul in self-control, thy liberty in law. Oh, beautiful, for patriotry masses beyond thy ears. Thy now a vast city, and dim thy gulantees. America, America, God shed His grace on thee. And crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. From sea to shining sea.
Mr. President, I think that does deserve an encore. They will sing the other encore.
Could we do "I Call Australia Home"?
We certainly could.
(Singing) I'd be two cities that never close down. From New York to Rome, and all London town. But oh, London, how far, oh, how wide I roam. I still call Australia home. I'm always traveling, I love being free. And so I keep leaving the sun and the sea. But my heart lies awaiting, over the far. I still call Australia home. Ooh, 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 the sounds of joy, just beating round the wound. Away from the family and friends. Ooh, 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 as the world gets older and colder. It's good to know where journey ends. Someday we'll all be together once more. When all of the ships come back to the shore. I realize something I've always known. I still call Australia, still call Australia, still call Australia home.
Thank you, Ms. Sikowski. It's going to be a great week in Los Angeles. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Lalo, Meskowsky, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vidal, Gosa, Weiss, Zain, Padilla, 13 members present and a quorum. Ms. President?
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before proceeding to the next presentation, let's try to dispense with consent items. Colleagues, Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Vidal, Gosa moves. Ms. Sikowski seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves, and Ms. Perry seconds.
On the regular agenda, Items 1 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, 1 through 19 now before us, public hearings have been held on these items in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. If there's no such motion, do we have requests for specials? Mr. Smith?
Numbers 9, 17, and 18.
9, 17, and 18, call special by Mr. Smith. Any other specials? If there's no other specials, let's open the roll and the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Items 20 through 24 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, Items 20 through 24 are before the City Council today. I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Request for specials, Items 20 through 24, seeing none. Let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Let us temporarily recess the regular meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Lalo, Meskowsky, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vidal, Gosa, Weiss, Zain, Padilla, 13 members present.
Members, the special meeting is now in session. We have a two-item agenda. I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on either of these items. Do we have any requests for specials? Items 1 or 2 of the special agenda, seeing none. Let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
We can now adjourn the special meeting, return to the regular meeting, and come to the next presentation, which will be conducted by Ms. Grohl.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, and colleagues. This morning, I have a pleasure, excuse me, of making two presentations. The first, and I'd like to ask Ellen and Robert Little, as well as the firefighters who are present with me today to come up as well. (Coughing) Excuse me. Ellen and Robert, come on. We always hear, read in the paper about heroic efforts of our firefighters and police officers. And today, I was at an event in Colfax Meadows, probably a month or maybe two months ago, and Ellen and Robert Little were talking to me and saying, excuse me, that they were so thankful and they were there that day to particularly thank the fire department for saving Robert's life. On June 26, 2004, at around 3:20 in the morning, Ellen placed a panicked call to 9/11 for her husband, Robert, who had had a sudden cardiac arrest due to sleep apnea. The 9/11 firefighter dispatcher, Bennett Wong, calmly and forcefully guided Ellen through what she had to do to keep him from choking until paramedics from Engine 78 arrived. Even though paramedics arrived within minutes, when they did arrive, Robert had lost consciousness and was no longer breathing. Fire Engine 78s, Captain Vosberg, Engineer Silva, firefighter paramedic Rodriguez, and firefighter paramedic Flores immediately went to work to save Robert's life. Once stabilized, the members of Rescue 886, firefighter Gibbs and firefighter Weiss Weaver, arrived on the scene in an ambulance to rush him to the hospital. The rescue efforts by these gentlemen saved Robert's life. Robert is making an excellent recovery without any significant damage to his heart or brain. The Littles have lived in Los Angeles since 1980. It was the first time that they had to utilize our 911 system, and they were stunned at how brilliantly it worked and how responsive our firefighters were, and are grateful to them for saving Robert's life. They've also adopted Fire Station by providing $4,000 contribution to the California Community Foundation, and for the funds to be shared between Fire Station 78 and 86. I also have Captain Resnick here today to help honor our firefighters. So if you could, I'd like you to join me in thanking our firefighters for their tireless dedication to serving our community. They are fire captain Kurt Vosberg, engineer Jose Silva, fire paramedic Alfred Flores, firefighter Howard Weiss Weaver, firefighter dispatcher Bennett Wong, which we don't always, you know, our dispatchers, we don't always get to see here, because they're talking on the phone, and so I'm so pleased that we could honor Bennett as well today. Firefighter paramedic David Rodriguez, and firefighter Kenneth Gibbs. Let's give them a great round of applause. And before I ask Representative for the Fire Department to also say something, I'd like to ask Ellen and Robert if they would come up for a minute and say a few words.
There just aren't words to express the gratitude we feel for these guys. We feel so grateful to be living in a community, in a city, that can provide this kind of service and that has this kind of, these men and these, this kind of crew, this kind of teamwork, that really, it just makes the world of difference. I don't want to live any further away than seven minutes from these guys.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you too.
All of you. She said everything okay. And which one of you guys gets to speak, or more than one?
Councilwoman Grohl.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Grohl, for inviting us today, and it's good to see you guys here today, alive and standing. It was a dramatic event for you, I know that, but it is a team effort on all of us, and even you, helping us get to the hospital on that little shortcut route. That was good. And, but thanks to our fire department too for giving us the great training that we get and our level of discipline to make this all work. Thank you again.
Thank you. And I know, Tom, I share the Fire Station with you, so I appreciate you letting me honor your firefighters in your district, but who served part of my district today, and we have wonderful proclamations. But what they did for Robert is something they do every single day in people across this city, and so we thought it was very important to bring them here today and share our thanks to these wonderful firefighters for saving Robert lives and what they do every single day. So thank you so much. We're going to take a picture in the back in a minute, but we'll present you with their proclamations. Thank you so much. All nice to see you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, did you want to say something?
Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment to remind Angelenos that these are our firefighters. These are your firefighters, the ultimate professionals. You have a reputation that is recognized throughout the world, and it's moments like this that you are actually proving, that you can actually be there for the community, for the people, and literally save lives. But equally important, we must commend you for your willingness to put on that uniform and at any moment risk your life. So I just wanted to say thank you, Wendy, for taking this opportunity to show our Angelenos that we have the best firefighters in the world, and this is why, because they're there on the spot at the moment, saving lives, risking their lives, and we owe a great debt of gratitude to you at every day. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, what a great story. What a great story with a happy ending. And actually, the almost exact same thing happened to my neighbor about a month ago. Almost the same thing. Her husband lost consciousness. I believe 112s responded in seven minutes or less and was able to save his life as well. It's just what you said about you never want to live more than seven minutes away. You know what? According to Chief Pramatri, I just heard him speak, all Angelenos right now are within a seven-minute response time. This fire department has really done an incredible job of getting the response time down, and every Angelino can rest assured that when they call 9/11, I believe it's a seven-minute response or less in some areas. And I can't help but take a moment like this and also thank my dear daddy in heaven, who was the champion of the paramedic program in 1970, a concept that no one believed would really work, a concept that was opposed by a lot of people. But the concept was, if you can get firefighters to get there in those first critical moments, we could be saving lives, and we know you're alive today because of our paramedics and our firefighters. So thanks, guys. You're doing a great job. This story happens, it's so dramatic, but you know what? This story happens every day in Los Angeles. We never even hear about them, so it was nice to hear about one.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange?
I just wanted to tag on there and congratulate everybody and all that. And as Ms. Han spoke about your father who fought for this here, I know he had to jump on an airplane to go convince then-Governor Reagan, whose father also, I think, died because there wasn't a response, and it made him more compassionate to it, so that we got this modern-day paramedic service that, as you said, seven minutes from everywhere. That's a story of a book, I think. That'd be a great story, or a great movie. It's great that the firefighters are there for us. It's the do-everything department, and they've certainly been doing everything this week. So I just want to stand to thank 86s and 78s, the big house there. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you all. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and you're right. We've been talking about how the fire department has been so responsive in this last week, and I told Tom this morning, I played a Tom Labange. I went this morning to Bureau of State Services sanitation yard at my district, and both Fire Stations 24 and 74s brought them donuts at 7:00 a.m. this morning, much to the chagrin of my staff, who had to be there at 7:00 with me. But it was an opportunity to say thank you, and we should do that at every step of the way. So thank you very much. We're very appreciative. Thank you. And we're just going to take a quick turn of minutes. (Applause) Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned, I have one other story. As Ms. Han said, there are so many great ones, and I had recently another incident in my district, and I'd ask the police department representatives that are here to come forward, and their families that are with them. Today, I'm here on behalf of Zineb and Haseen Hawass to commend our, and don't be shy, LAPD officers who saved their 18-month-old son's life. They can't make it today because they are due with their second child any moment, but wanted for us to express today their thanks to these police officers. On Monday, January 3rd of this year, and Mr. Zain highlighted this for me a week ago when we get a report every day of what our officers are doing in our districts. Officers were flagged down by a citizen who advised them that there was a baby on the second floor of an apartment building who was not breathing. Officer John Smith and Officer Dan Jones requested a rescue ambulance and ran to the location. The mother was holding this baby, who was limp and not breathing. The officers took the baby, placed it on the ground, and opened the airway. Once they did that, the baby started to breathe and take small breaths. The rescue ambulance arrived and transported the young baby to Thank you. And we're just going to take a quick turn of minutes. Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned, I have one other story. As Ms. Ms. Han said, there are so many great ones, and I had recently another incident in my district, and I'd ask the Police Department representatives that are here to come forward and their families that are with them. Today, I'm, I'm here on behalf of Zineb and Haseen Hawass to commend our, and don't be shy, LAPD officers who saved their 18-month-old son's life. They can't make it today because they are due with their second child any moment, and, but wanted to, for us to express today their thanks to these police officers. On Monday, January 3 of this year, and Mr. Zine highlighted this for me a week ago when we, we get a report every day of what our officers are doing in our districts. Officers were flagged down by a citizen who advised them that there was a baby on the second floor of an apartment building who was not breathing. Officer John Smith and Officer Dan Jones requested a rescue ambulance and ran to the location. The mother was holding this baby, who was limp and not breathing. The officers took the baby, placed it on the ground, and opened the airway. Once they did that, the baby started to breathe and take small breaths. The rescue ambulance arrived and transported the young baby to Pacifica Hospital. It was determined that she had 103-degree fever that most likely caused a seizure and subsequent breathing problem. Baby Ryan is now doing fine. I'd like to not only introduce the officers, but we have two captains who are here, many of you know quite well, Captain Bill Sweet, William Sweet, from North Hollywood, and also Captain Chris Pritchard, who are here to honor them as well. But on behalf of the entire City Council and the Hawass family, please join me in thanking LAPD officers John Smith and Dan Jones for their tireless dedication to our community, and give them a great round of applause. And they're present here today with their families, and we always want to thank your families for allowing you to, to serve the city of Los Angeles and risking your lives for each and every one of us. So I'd like to, before I ask the officers to speak, to ask if one of our captains would like to say anything.
Good morning. All of the men and women at the North Hollywood Community Police Station wish to express their thanks not only to these officers, but to Councilmember Grul and to all of the members of the City Council for recognizing the tremendous efforts of the officers. So, once again, thank you all.
Thank you.
John? Let me also recognize Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to offer my congratulations. John, I've known you for a long, long time, knowing you're a hard-charging police officer. I like to see those hash marks. That's an impressive sight. Every year goes by, and over 20 years now of service to the people of Los Angeles. I just want to offer my congratulations to both of you and remind the command staff, this came about, we get a daily briefing through the email from Valley Bureau, and I'm sure all the other council members receive that, of significant incidents that take place. And when I looked at that, I noticed the incident took place. I brought it to Councilmember Grul's attention. So it's important for your watch commanders to document that to West Bureau, to Valley Bureau, to Central South, so we can know, because your officers do a tremendous job every single day, and some of these incidents we become aware of, others, we don't. And we like to recognize the hard work and the dedication, and this was sparked simply by the Valley Bureau giving us that daily report of the significant incidents. So I just want to remind you the importance of that so we can pay recognition and respect to those officers who do that job every single day, and congratulations to both of you. You have no hash marks yet, but working with Officer Smith, I'm sure you'll get a few, because he's got a, a lot of years of service, and Captain Sweet, you've got a whole lot of hash marks there. He's, he's trying to hide it now. Captain Bill Sweet, we worked together many years ago down at the Coliseum when the hash marks weren't as many as they are today. So congratulations to all of you, to the family, the LAPD, and the Fire Department out there every day taking care of you. And Wendy, thanks for bringing these folks forward for acknowledgement. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Grul, Councilman Zine, for your kind words, members of the City Council. I'd like to introduce to my, you to my family, my father, Don Smith, and my mother, Sue Smith, from the Modesto area, who drove here for this, and then my domestic partner over there with the camera. Thank you very much. Without them, it wouldn't be possible.
Thank you.
Want to get the proclamation of Dana? Okay. Tom is our other photographer here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Officer Smith. Let me excuse you, Officer Jones.
I don't have any hash marks yet. I've been a, I've been a police officer for two years, and it's, it's just been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Los Angeles. I just want to thank the City Council for doing this today. I'm second generation. My father served 30 years in the city of Los Angeles, and I just feel learning from him, service and devotion to a city, and it's been my dream to be, serve the, the citizens of Los Angeles, and it's just a real honor and a privilege to have this job, and I hope to serve the city for a long time. So, just want to thank everybody for today. Thank you. Just here with me today is my wife, Danata, and my son, Matthew.
Thank you. Let me take some pictures in the back. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and for the rest of the council for letting us honor these wonderful police officers and firefighters today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grul, for bringing them before us. Our next presentation will be Councilmember Labange.
I'll call you. Okay. Did you want to? Yeah, back, yeah, everything in the back. Okay.
Same earthquake happens in Northridge, only 50 people die. I want to submit to you the lives of 29,950 people are saved every time there's a major earthquake as a result of the work of 900 hardworking men and women in the Department of Building and Safety and all the other departments who are inspecting those buildings and who are making sure the buildings are safe. And thank you for your support in accomplishing that. Thank you.
Andrew, thank you and thank all your inspectors who are still working around the clock through other parts of the city. Now it's my honor to call to the microphone Council General Nomoto for remarks representing Japan and our long partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, council members, ladies and gentlemen, for this proclamation regarding the great Hanzin earthquake of 10 years ago. I will certainly convey your message to my home government. I know the people of Kobe very much thank you, your remembering of their hardship as well as their effort to recover. I am now thinking also of the devastating earthquake and tsunami which took place in the Indian Ocean at the end of last year. And I am sure and I hope that completed recovery of Kobe will encourage those people who now remain to face the daunting task of recovering their lives in Asia. Thank you very much again for your thoughtfulness and friendship to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No one back? You want to take it right here? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange and Ms. Perry. Our next presentations will be done by Councilmember Garcetti as soon as...
Colleagues, we have a very special undertaking a few times a year in CD-13 that we've had before, you hear before, but our latest graduating class of our Neighborhood Leadership Institute, 30 individuals who recently underwent an intensive training on how to build power, how to organize, and how to advocate for their own communities is here before us today. And we have six individuals from that class who are able to join us here today. As we approach Martin Luther King's birthday, there's a couple quotes that I thought were most fitting as we look at congratulating these individuals who have taken the time to understand how this city works and understand how to build power. Unfortunately, in an era, excuse me, era of term limits, if we're lucky, we're here for eight years. What's important to do is to make sure that communities have leaders that are here for a generation. And it's been a part of the way we've organized our office to make sure that we have community organizers who know what it takes to do grassroots campaigns, whether it's for speed bumps, whether it's for more affordable housing, whether it's for parks in a neighborhood, whether it's for good development, all of those things. And as we often say in the class, we hope that you will use what you learn, sometimes even against us here in this horseshoe. It is about true citizen empowerment in the most direct sense. But Martin Luther King said, "Press on and keep pressing on." And I think that that is exactly what we hope that this group of individuals will do, be able to listen clearly to the needs in their own community in Council District 13 in this case, but also then be able to take what they hear, boil it down into campaigns for bettering their own communities. We've been able to graduate over 100 people, I think it's actually over 200 right now, in the last four years in Neighborhood Leadership Institute. We teach it in many different languages. We have examples of people who come from successful campaigns for health care, for hospitals, to beat away prisons in their community, to make sure that no neighborhood is run over, no matter what the wealth, the ethnic makeup, the languages that are spoken are in that community. And in Council District 13, which according to 2000 Census of the 15 council districts is the third poorest council district in this city, which has the highest percentage of renters, about 83% of our residents are not homeowners, we have needs for infrastructure and for empowerment. We teach this in multiple languages. This last class, we were able to teach in English, but we've done it in Spanish and other languages before. And together, this forms a core of individuals who you will see many more times than just here today. In fact, I think some of them are familiar to you already. I want to thank them for taking time out of their busy schedules to take this class. It's part of an ongoing curriculum that we have to teach Planning 101 and Housing 101 and Planning 102 and Government 101 and all these different classes to be able to give people to unlock the doors of how we do business here. And for people who are watching who live in Council District 13, we encourage you to join our next class when we do that this spring. And you can call our council office to enroll in this. And you'll hear from some of the graduates in just a moment. But let me read the names and present certificates to the six that are here today. And I will read one of these fully so that folks know. This is for Paul Redman. "In recognition of your efforts and commitment to your neighborhood by completing Council District 13's leadership training, your participation demonstrates the depth of your passion for developing yourself as a conscientious leader who strives to improve your neighborhood and the city as a whole. I am proud to honor you on this day." And please give a round of applause to Paul Redman. And Dorit Dallar Guerrero. And Maurice Chosey. I'll get a left-right thing done. And Maureen Brostoff. John Sevker. And Sharon Oster. And Stephen May. Seven individuals.
Bike, absolutely.
And Stephen rode his bike. And we'd love to hear from two of the graduates, Dorit and Sharon, if you'd like to come forward and say something this time. Sharon first.
I just wanted to say that I think the democratic process makes most sense and works most effectively when it works on all levels. And I really appreciate Councilmember Garcetti's efforts, along with his staff, Shane Goldsmith and Anna Guerrero, to reach out to the community, to foster and encourage leadership on the local level. It was a pleasure to meet his staff and my active neighbors. And I was very inspired by the Leadership Training Council, so, uh, Leadership Training. So, thank you very much and thank you for having us.
I'd like to thank Anna and Shane for taking the time to put together such a great training. I'd like to thank Eric for allowing his staff to encourage the community. And I'd also like to thank Eric for having a staff that is so, all of his staff, not just Shanna, Shane and Anna, all of his staff is so open to listening to the community, listening to the members when we, members of the community, when we have something to say or we have a problem, they always address it. I'd also like to encourage everyone who's listening, who's in CD-13, who has a desire to change something they don't like about their neighborhood, or to preserve something that they love about their neighborhood, to take this training. And I'd like to encourage all of the council members, if you don't already have a training like this, please start it. Thank you.
And lastly, in closing, I'll quote Dr. King again one more time. He once said famously that we are not makers of history, we are made by history. And that history that informs us in our community of the needs that we continue to have for schools, for parks, for the basics of city government and state government and federal government is what will make our history for the people that we precede and those who come after us. So, thank you again to all the graduates. Congratulations, and we hope that you use that power for good. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Did you have another one?
Yeah, one more. I'd like to invite our Information Technology Agency. Mr. Zine, you want to join me? Remember the Indianapolis Award that we are, that we picked up? Why don't you come and join us for this? At the League of Cities Conference, colleagues, Mr. Zine and I were very proud and pleased to accept an award on behalf of the City of Los Angeles. Many people who watch us on Channel 35, the activists who were just before us, come to this city or learn about this city online at lacity.org, our website. That's lacity.org. And if you haven't visited, please do. In Indianapolis, where literally hundreds of cities gathered to learn about how to improve our services and learn about the policies and the politics nationwide at the local level, we were proud, Mr. Zine and I, to accept an award on behalf of the city from the Center for Digital Government for having the country's third-best website we, in municipal government. We had, I think, we were 26th when we started, is that right?
Thirty-sixth.
Thirty-sixth, excuse me. And then we went to fifth the year before and now third. And as we told, Mr. Zine and I told the first-place and second-place winners, we're coming after you because we're not going to rest until we are the best in the nation. Some of the highlights of what our city's website has done is we have produced more permits, we believe, I know Andrew Adelman was here before, more permits online, e-permits have been issued through the lacity.org website than any other website in the United States of America. We are looking not only at the ways of enhancing e-government, but also e-democracy through our early notification system, which can always be improved, and we strive to do that, but still as a model in informing our citizenry of what things we are considering before us. This is only made possible by a crack team of folks who every single day dedicate themselves to what the Japanese call kaizen, which is constant improvements, never resting and accepting that our website is good and a bronze place finish is good enough. I know that they are also coming after the second-place and first-place finishers. So, because of that, we wanted to honor them and proclaim this week Information Technology Week. We encourage folks to use a little bit less paper this week. We encourage folks to spend a little more time on the website. And we encourage folks to let us know how we can improve it because we want to make sure that we continue to do that. And so with that, I'll hand it over to my colleague, Mr. Zine, and then I hope you'll congratulate ITA for their great work.
Thank you, Councilmember Eric Garcetti. And the reason we accepted the award is to save costs of the city so they didn't have to send the IT people back for the award. And we are members of the National League of Cities, and they had this wonderful event where we have a lot of information, exchange of information, and we're very honored and proud. And being the City of Los Angeles, we want to maintain that stature throughout the country. So, it was with our pleasure that we accepted that award. And they duly recognize Los Angeles. In fact, some of the other cities that were receiving recognition were looking at me to take pictures of them receiving their award. And Eric and I, hey, thank you to the, to our competition, yeah, so we know what they're receiving. But it was with honor that we received that recognition. And if you look at what IT has done for the people of Los Angeles, not only with the Internet, but the 311 system, with the ambassadors that handle those calls 24 hours a day to serve the people of Los Angeles. And it's a real tribute to the employees of the City of Los Angeles, in particular, IT, where you can report potholes, report any and everything 24 hours a day to the 311 system, will go online, they've developed that system, and it's obviously working toward perfection. And when we reach number one, which will be in a couple of years, maybe next year, next year we'll do it. And we want to reduce paper, so I'm going to take away your notes.
You can take them away.
There you go. You got your notes, we're going to save paper. But we have a general man, here, you can have those back. We have a general manager of information technology who's really concerned about customer service. And when it comes to developing customer service to the premier category, Ms. Bradshaw's the one that does that with her wonderful staff that we have behind us, including Roger, who's always there, making sure that we have things taken care of for the council and for all the computers that we utilize and the people of Los Angeles. So, I offer my congratulations along with all of our colleagues. And you make the city proud when we're recognized throughout the country that Los Angeles has this and we've developed this, and our people in-house within the city employee group have made this happen. It's a real tribute to the workers of the City of Los Angeles, in particular, information technology. So, without further comments, we're going to turn it over to the general manager of the information...
Mr. Zine, we are going to have some further comments?
We've got to hear from the historian. I know Kam Labange has to say some, the historian.
Let us recognize Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Garcetti, just a point of information. Who are number one and two?
Richmond, Virginia was number one.
Richmond, Virginia. But it wasn't New York City?
No, it wasn't.
So, we're the number-one city with population over 3.5 million.
Absolutely.
Right, so that's the key.
Absolutely.
So, we get in there. And I just want to congratulate everybody. It's amazing what our department's doing to help the public, amazing what the public's doing all the way around. I also would just like to suggest in the future, if we could, Ask for Pat. Is Ask for Pat still out there? I see him.
It says Ask Pat.
Ask Pat. Yeah, I used to say Ask for Pat when I worked for John. Okay. So, Ask for Pat, Ask Pat. It's very good to have that information because information is knowledge is power. And I just wanted to say that's what you do. And if you also get a chance at Prospect and Hillhurst, there's wires coming out of the corner that I want to remind you of that have to be pulled out there. Prospect and Hillhurst. Good job, ITA, number-one in the country for cities over 3.9 million, right? Thank you.
Our general manager, information technology. Let's have a drum roll. Thayer Bradshaw.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Councilmembers Zine and Garcetti, for accepting the award on behalf of the City of Los Angeles Information Technology Agency. We have over 200,000 visitors to our website. And that website and our e-government initiatives that the council members have mentioned are saving money, gaining efficiencies, saving traffic congestion, making it better for government, businesses, and residents. And that's really what e-government is about, and our website is simply that gateway. So, we're very pleased and proud, I'm most proud of the people behind me. These are the folks within ITA that are, you don't see their faces every day, you do see their work through your technology and infrastructure connections. So, the congratulations really goes to you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Our next presentation is Councilmember Perry, and then we will have one by Mr. Reyes. But Ms. Perry.
I'm going to be joined by Councilmembers Ed Reyes and Council President Alex Padilla. Hi, everybody. Can you do me a favor? Since the list is kind of long, can you read the list?
Sure.
Thanks.
Don't use your own voice.
Oh, no. I think I'll be okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And we are joined by the Latinos in Technology event chairs, Roger Fernandez and Alicia Maldonado here to my left. And I've asked Mr. Reyes to honor me or help me out with my voice by reading just the names of the committee members very quickly so they can be recognized.
Extraordinary opportunity to do a duet. Councilmember Perry, the members of their planning committee are Olivia Alvarez, Chris Arzate, Francisco Canche, Carla Hernandez, Fred Munoz, Hortensia Olmos, Linda Pollan, Jason Posada, Kenneth Ramirez, Emily Robinson, Robyn Sins, Edmundo Rodriguez, Manuel Romero, Liz Salivar, Elizabeth Zamora, and Lara Zapian.
Thank you very much. With Alicia and Roger and the help of all of the great team members behind us, they have brought great information and resources to the people of Los Angeles. The Latinos in Technology Conference is an annual event that brings together technology experts, professionals, elected officials, educators, community-based organizations, young people, and students from across the state in an effort to bridge the digital divide in Latino and other underserved communities. This conference educates and informs the community and the Latino community by examining best practices, emerging technology trends, and model programs in the field of education, business, public policy, and nonprofit. It also explores ways to break down barriers that prevent universal access to technology. This conference helps to empower Latinos to compete effectively in today's institutions of learning by donating new computers to students from underserved communities. So, I thought it was only fitting that even though the conference was held last November, we finally got a day where everybody could be here and to congratulate the conference, the co-chairs, for bringing important resources and information to the residents and businesses of Los Angeles and for once again engaging our diverse communities. And I'd like to ask my council president and then Mr. Reyes to say a few words.
Thank you, Jan, and all the committee members that helped put on the third annual conference and another successful conference. It keeps growing and growing every year. I was proud to be a part of this conference from its very inception, when it was just an idea brought to me by Roger Fernandez. Because, colleagues, as many of you know, I'm a former chair of the ITGS Committee. And in part of my work back then, we know that on a national level, the digital divide is really one of the civil rights challenges of our generation. Those who have access to computers and technology and those who do not create a significant inequity and unbalance in our society. And even when there is that access, those who have the skills and knowledge and familiarity of computers and technology and those who don't also leaves a significant gap. So, my hats are off to everybody who's been involved with this conference for everything they've done, not only to raise the issues, but to reach out, bring people together, to help bridge across that digital divide. Because computers and technology are only placing an increasing role in our day-to-day lives. And so, for all the families that they've helped connect, literally, want to say thank you and look forward to being part of this conference in future years.
I, Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to stand and congratulate and thank Councilmember Perry for her leadership in supporting this effort and the stewardship demonstrated by our council president. As you know, in our area, Southern California, our dropout rate has reached up to 49%. And we talk about the skill set and the tools to defend for oneself and become independent, technology is key. So, for all of those who have demonstrated this grand support, I want to thank them. And we continue working forward to more conferences as we develop those nets for those young people and the working folks who fall through that, through those cracks. Thank you very much.
Mr. Weiss?
Our co-chairs, would you allow them to speak first?
No, Mr. Weiss would like to say something to them as well.
I'll be brief. Would love to hear from you guys. I just want to thank you for everything that you're doing. It's a really, really important effort. And Mr. Padilla had the opportunity to chair the Information Committee. I chair it now. If there's anything I can do to help you in your efforts, I'm there 110%. A few months ago, Mr. Cardenas and I were in his district where we rolled out a Wi-Fi pilot project, the first Wi-Fi pilot project in the city that sanctioned by the city. And I kind of had an opportunity to decide where it would go and was pleased to work with Mr. Cardenas to ensure that it went in a community that suffers from the digital divide issues that you are all so concerned with. So, I just want to let you know of that one concrete example and assure you that if there's anything further that I could do to help you bridge that digital divide, I'm there and I would be delighted to assist you. Thank you for the efforts that you're involved in.
Mr. Cardenas.
I just want to say that this event is extremely important for us to keep on the forefront the importance of technology and how it can be a conduit to get some of our children to be inspired to go off to universities. I personally was inspired by an engineer, to become an engineer myself and to go to college. And I went away from home and lived away from home for the first time in my life. I left Pacoima. And it was a wonderful opportunity. And I got the opportunity as well to work for a very prestigious company as an engineer, Hewlett-Packard, and we know it as HP. Many people have desktops that have, that are HP units. And it was very inspiring for me to be able to use my talents and abilities, to use all the experiences that I earned in Pacoima, and to be able to defy, defy my counselor who told me, when I told her for the first time when I was in the 10th grade, my first meeting with my counselor, she's supposed to tell me what classes I'm going to take, I told her I wanted to be an engineer. She said, "Tony, you'll make a fine mechanic." The lady never met me before in her life, but yet she was trying to deter me from either challenging myself or to live my dreams. That's why this is so important, because you bring together professionals, men and women, who can actually tell the young people, "You can do this too," and to inspire them to go beyond and to challenge themselves. Some people went to college and they tried to be engineers or scientists or whatever majors, and they may have dropped out or changed their mind. But you can't fault somebody for trying. And that's what's so important. You're inspiring people, you're actually reminding people that technology is the way of the future. And the only way we built these HP computers is somebody had to go to school, somebody had to learn the business, somebody had to learn how to do all these things. And our young people in our communities can do that. So, thank you for doing what you do. It is very important. It's wonderful to see so many professionals so engaged and committed, but most importantly, the results are paramount and are the kind of things that we have to continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council President, members of the City Council. Thank you. Thank you for this great honor. First of all, I wanted to go ahead and thank this team because without this team, we wouldn't be able to do anything. So, thank you for the committee members. Also, I wanted to thank some of you, especially Tony Cardenas. Thank you for your support ever since you got here, you came on board, so we really, really thank you. Councilman Garcetti, Alex Padilla, thank you very much, Jan Perry, Bernard Parks, Antonio Villargosa, and all of you that really supported this conference. The conference has been growing. This year, we had 600 attendants. We were able to donate new seven laptops, computers to students. So, it's a good thing. We are doing a little bit to minimize the digital divide. Thank you.
Mr. President, Councilmember Perry, and all the other council members, I just wanted to acknowledge what Tony Cardenas said in terms of the importance of a conference like this. Really appreciate your comments. That's exactly the reason that we do it. Also, with Councilmember Weiss mentioning the Wi-Fi issue, and LA Trade Tech College was one of the participants at the conference, and they are engaging in discussions right now with the city as a result of the conference. So, we think that's really critical. I just did want to thank Councilmember Perry. She, from the very beginning, has been very supportive of the conference. Also, Tony Cardenas was at the conference, and so was Antonio Villargosa, Eric Garcetti, and Bernard Parks, and Thayer Bradshaw from the ITA. We'd like to thank them all for their support, and we're looking forward to working with the City of LA again this year. Thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Our final presentation is going to be by Councilmember Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Much like Councilmember Perry, this event took place back on November 6. And I'd like to call up our honored guests, Grandmaster Chun.
How are you?
Good morning, sir. I'd like to welcome them. They put together a successful multicultural festival parade. And at this parade, it was extraordinary because we actually had, in our city, MacArthur Park area, the Korean Navy's Honor Guard, the Color Guard, we had the marching band. You talk about the presence of such dignified representatives. It was amazing. And today, I am honored to have Grandmaster Chun with us, who is the organizer of this festival. And accompanying him, we have Grandmaster Yang, President of the Korean Professional Women's Association, Ms. Kang Ja Lim. I apologize if I mispronounce it. And we also have many folks who we will be providing certificates to that essentially put together a great effort, hard work, and they are demonstrating their dedication to the community. On that day, we had a stage, we had song, we had dance, we had food, and it was great. And every year that we put this together, I know it will improve. The presence of such dignitaries was significant. I want to thank you for all your hard work. And one of the significant accomplishments he has made in the areas, he also provides incredible diversion through the martial arts, through sports, and is able to funnel the energy that sometimes gets sucked in by the gang culture, he's actually moved into a direction that's very positive. And for that, I want to thank you on behalf of not only the Police Department, but the City of LA for all the great things you've done. Please. Please.
Thank you very much. Good morning. It's all our council that we're proud of here to stay, to join. I'd like to introduce for that the WSSF, the World Cultural Sports Foundation, and also Korean Professional Business Women's Association President Lim Kyung Ja. We'd like to say thank you first to our city council, Ed Reyes, the first district. And also that we'd like to thank you to Grandmaster Yang from that far away from the Rolling Hills, that what we did, you know, MacArthur Park is our city, it's a beautiful city, it's a center, it's a beautiful park. And it used to be some kind of, you know, gang violence or drugs and the kind of criminals is kind of, you know, not easy really to talk about, there's a great park. But right now, after our councilman, Ed Reyes, and also people of the city of Los Angeles who non-profit organizations, people who are leaders, community leader, work together and especially also City Mayor's Office and L.A. City Police Department. Right now, this L.A. city, at the most beautiful park is the MacArthur Park. And it's clean and beautiful and people come to lunch, music, and the gospel, they're singing each other that for. We're really proud of that, what we did. And this center has most about maybe 70 percent over that Latino community, but you know, right next, the community is a Korean community and also Chinese and Japanese community, also African-American community, South Central and East L.A.'s, you know, Mexican community area. So also Hollywood is very much closer. So we put together, say, come together our neighbor. So that is, the name is L.A. for Peace and Unity Parade Festival. We put six months over and prepare and tie, especially Korean Professional Business Women's Association, 48 member. These peoples are all individual professional businesswoman. You know, some of the ladies here hold millionaires and some billionaires here. We put together the working and I would like to say thank you and also this for honor to us and I want to say thank you again. So we, this is annually, that's what we talk about it annually. So hopefully that wonderful event is every year we come. And also I'd like to say thank you, Sonia. You're such a wonderful, great heart, you're working hard. And also especially, I'd like to say thank you, LAPD. That was such a wonderful job we did together. And I want to say that, you know, the Monday, Monday is coming, Alex Padilla is our city council president, I know you're going to participate, right? So I got the message from your office, so I spoke to that Mr. Larry Grant the last night. And also Jenny is my council and I want you to participate that, don't forget, the Monday 17, Martin Luther King Parade, I saw that 15 units is a co-chairperson. I'd be very proud of. Also, Tom Robin is our councilman. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and we can sit on back with certificates.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Members, that concludes our presentations today. I believe now is the time for public comment. So let me call the cards that have been submitted for public comment, starting with Mr. Raymond Yu, who will be followed by Alberto Tatoya and Maribel Clator. Mr. Yu?
Microphone on? Good morning. My name is Raymond Yu. I'm a resident of Warner, California. I'm a visitor of Chinatown. Currently, I have spoken to the Bureau of Street Lighting, staff members, then Harvard. Currently, they told me that the bids for the Chinatown Streetscape Phase Number Two traffic signal construction, they're working on it, and the construction hasn't been started yet because Chinese New Year is on the way on February 9 and the parade is on February 12. The problem is, I have spoken to Mr. George Yu, he explained to me, they cannot start the traffic signal construction on Chinatown because the Chinese New Year Parade is on the way. And February 12, Golden Dragon Parade is here, but they cannot do the construction. If they do, all people will, if people standing in the construction materials during the parade, they could fall, they could get hurt. It's very dangerous doing the parade and we don't want that happen. In the meantime, I have the bids report for the Chinatown. This is the notice for the bids and I have a Department of Public Works Bureau of Street Lighting, advertisement for receipt for bids, Chinatown Streetscape, Street Lighting Project Work Order L-0249154, estimated cost about $288,100. The bidding, it was in October 5, the bids were received on October 27. The result was, they were non-responsive and excessive and they're going to re-advertise the bids for the Chinatown Streetscape Phase Number Two. And I have the LED, they have the LEDOT sheet. On North Broadway between Alpine College and Bernard Street, they will work for the construction beginning in spring 2005, which is on March or April 2005. And they're ordering the brand-new mask arms and the brand-new street lighting and the intersection construction will start soon by removing the old mask arm, replacing the temporary posts during the construction. And the construction would start in May or July, which is in summer, and the construction due date will be due, will be done in October 2005. And I have the Bureau of Street Lighting replaces Chinatown-
Mr. Yu, can I ask you to sum up?
Go ahead.
Please conclude. Please conclude, we have other speakers.
I'm sorry about it. I have one more question. Chinatown Streetscape Phase Number One was due on Broadway Mid-Block. Phase Two construction on North Broadway intersection, they're going to start the construction in spring 2005. And the Streetscape Phase Number Three, Hill Street from Old to Bernard Street, construction will be started in next year after the Phase Two has been completed for the prerequisite. Thank you and you have a nice day.
Thank you. The next speaker is to be followed by Nadine Diaz and Miguel Angel Perez.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Alberto Clator and I'm a current student at East Los Angeles College and I'm here to express the necessity of green space, not warehouses in my community. For the past eight years, my family and I have been South Central farmers and knowing that gives me such a sense of pride and knowing that there will always be fresh fruits and vegetables on my dinner table and yet it angers me that the city council ignores a garden of such magnitude in Los Angeles County, a place like no other in Los Angeles. It also angers me that you are trying to destroy who we are and what we stand for and part of our, part of our culture and we're not going to take it anymore. We demand green space, not warehouses. And remember, South Central farmers are feeding families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maribel Clator. I'm also an East Los Angeles student. In my community, it's well-known for high crime rates and the lack of community involvement. This farmland, the garden on 41st and Alameda, gathered the community, uniting them. It has brought the community together and it has made children in my community have a play, a safe place for them to go to. They no longer have to fear the streets. They have found a place for them. My family has been there for over eight years. We have worked these lands. We want to preserve this green space. We are farmers, female families. My community feeds families. Warehouses are not going to feed our families. We demand green space. Thank you.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Nadine Diaz. I'm a graduate student at USC, also a third-generation graduate at USC. Approximately a year ago, we were here to support the farmers, the USC School of Social Work grad students and other students as well, and we just want to reiterate today that we are still here in support of them and we hope that we can work with you, all of you, in making a garden a reality. And one last thing, I would just like to reference what Councilman Cardenas said in regards to getting an education. The same thing happened to my father back in the 50s. He graduated from Roosevelt and the counselor had told him, you can't be a doctor, you're Mexican. You have to be a janitor or a maintenance worker, so don't even try to go to medical school. My dad graduated from USC in '68 with the Farm D. He's also a medical doctor and a doctor of anesthesiology. He is Mexican-American, he's Chicano, and he's very proud. So we all have to encourage our students, encourage our young people, no matter what color they are, no matter what race, no matter what economic background they come from, anyone can do what they want to do if they work hard and they follow the rules. Thank you.
Miguel Angel Perez, Boy Heights Neighbor Alliance. Again, one more time, just a reminder to the whole city of Los Angeles, the state of California, and the Northern Territories occupied. Farmers, capicinos, historically have worked this land. Indigenous people have worked this land and kept it and become caretakers. Everybody here has reaped the benefits of the natural resources, the land and the labor. One more time, every time you go to your tables, every time you go to your homes, you're on the sacred lands of indigenous nations and indigenous people and the labors and the fruits of those labors, the food you eat that you share with your families and yourselves. Every time you have lunch, every time you eat, every time you have dinner, it is important to understand that the people who work the land need to be respected. In all your districts, there are green spaces and there are gardens that feed the people and feed the families. It must be respected. One more time. Aquí estamos y no nos vamos. Tierra y libertad.
That concludes our public comment period. Mr. Clerk, what are the items remaining on the desk?
Item nine was called special by Councilmember Smith.
We recognize Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask, Mr. Fujioka, please come to the table. Is he still here? There he is. Mr. Fujioka. I've asked that this be called special because of one element that's in this report. I have no problem with the majority of the report, but I wasn't in the Finance Committee and I apologize the day that this came forward, but on page nine, item number D, dealing with the transfer of funds to Cultural Affairs Department because of overspending and their grant, their money available to them for cultural affairs projects that they collect from building and safety fees. Now, I have a real problem that we are now being asked to transfer $1.8 million from the general fund to cover their overspending that went on in cultural affairs, which is supposed to be supported by fees collected by building and safety. So my question to you, Mr. Fujioka, is how did this $1.8 million get so big halfway through our fiscal year? And two, does this mean we're reducing additional services that we're providing through the general fund by $1.8 million to transfer over to that department because they've overspent?
Well, it's not as much as overspending. It's a consequence of the, that the estimate didn't reach the, didn't meet the actual receipts.
Stop the clock, please.
Building and Safety provide an estimate based on, you know, the 1 percent fee we charge developers for, for arts projects, basically, as, you know, that's tied to their, to the developments. But the developers have an option of, of building these projects themselves rather than giving the 1 percent to Building and Safety and then that's passed through to the Cultural Affairs Department. It's, but regardless, we still have a hole of $1.8 million right now in the cultural affairs budget.
Procedurally, how does it get to $1.8 million? Did it happen incrementally or did it happen in one big lump sum and they just didn't realize it was coming in so big?
Well, again, it's a consequence of what we estimated, was estimated by not only our office, but then Building and Safety and Cultural Affairs and then the actual receipts that are coming in.
But again, is incrementally, do they know month to month that they're not meeting those numbers?
I'm Laura Guglam with the City Administrative Officer. This was really a budgeting issue. We anticipated $1.8 million in additional revenue at the beginning of the year when we prepared the budget. Cultural Affairs, a couple of months ago, first identified that they, that that revenue wasn't coming in and we've been working with Cultural Affairs and the Department of Building and Safety to determine why was there this discrepancy. Building and Safety's revenues were up, yet this, this revenue stream for Cultural Affairs was down and it was really an error in the portion of the Building and Safety revenue that doesn't qualify under this, under the ordinance to be transferred to Cultural Affairs. And that was just an error by staff. So it's also important to recognize that this report does not, in fact, transfer $1.8 million. It identifies that this is a potential problem that may need to be corrected via a general fund transfer at some point in the year. However, we are working with Cultural Affairs and we are encouraging them to scale back their services so that a general fund appropriation will not be required.
Okay, so they're, they're cutting back drastically, I would assume, then?
Right now, they're in the process of revising the work plan to see, in fact, where they can cut back. We have, we have, we would like to look at Culture Affairs, books call it, but the various accounts to see if there are current, whether or not the current accounts have surpluses or whether or not older accounts or funds have the potential for surpluses and prior encumbrances. And so that's something we would like to do.
Has there been any auditing of this process at all?
No, but I think one is warranted, given what we have here.
Members of the council, what I would suggest is that we go forward with the rest of the report, I think it's important, and that we refer back to Committee item number D on page nine for further consideration and to determine whether a real audit is needed or what the real problem, it seems to be some procedural problems here that let this get kind of way out of hand. And so I really ask that we take item number D and send it back to committee and that would be my motion.
Is there a second?
That motion has been seconded. So with that recommendation of referring that one item back to committee, the remainder of the report is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
That is approved. Next item?
Items 17 and 18 were called special by Councilmember Smith.
All right, shall we consider them together?
Yeah, actually on number 17, that's just a receiving file. I just want to let the council know that in our debate on the news rack ordinance, there was some concern about historical buildings. We took another look at it and we decided to keep the proposal as was originally presented. So this is receiving file number 17, which is any historical building may have a news rack in front of it, but only if the owners of the property say it's okay with them. It has to come from that point of view, not that the news racks have the right to put it there unless they say no. So it puts the onus back on the property in order to say it's okay with us. On the bigger issue, and I'll go right to number 18 if you will, we'll just hear them both together. Number 18, at the request of the council, the committee took up the issue of the phasing in of the color. And there was a lot of debate around this chamber about that. And I thought there was a tremendous validity to the arguments brought forth as it particularly pertained to the small news companies in the city of L.A. and the very small publishers. And so we convened a meeting in our office to try and work these details out. We went back to committee and the committee recommendation is as follows, and I personally, I want to commend very much the news publisher industry, particularly the L.A. Times. I may have been a little harsh on them and I think if one newspaper was the paper in town that was kind of obeying the law, it was the L.A. Times. But particularly the newspaper industry who came to us and worked with us through this and my staff, John Lee, and then the Clean Coalition, the neighborhood organizations who were fighting to get this law passed, came to an agreement and the recommendation today before you is a seven-year phase-in, which coincides basically with the lifespan of the average news rack. The news industry told us that is the number that is right to them, seven years on color for all the news industry, not just the small publishers, but all of them. And so we have lightened up a little bit. The Clean Coalition said that's fine with them. We will go forward with the rest of the ordinance, which is we begin to lessen the number of racks out there. They would allow them to keep the color for the timeframe of seven years maximum, but I also want to make it very clear that at the end of seven years, it is over. You've asked for seven years because that's how long your racks average last, that's what you need to do this. And it'd be wise for the newspaper industry not to walk in on the seventh year and say, we didn't get it done, we want more time, because I don't think you're going to get that. So as you go through the process of replacing those over that timeframe, that you bring them in with the new color and that is the instructions of the committee. And with that, I thank the council, I thank particularly the industry and the Clean Coalition for making this happen. I think we resolved the issues that were brought forth and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Zine?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Smith, I noticed that some of the news racks being installed are a new style news rack. It's gone from the traditional style to a new style. They've got one, I think it's in front of City Hall South or East or here in the City Hall Civic Center complex. Is there a requirement that when they install a new rack, they go to the new color? Because this is a brand-new style, brand-new rack, but it's, and it's not the L.A. Times in recognition of the L.A. Times back there. The newspaper rack, which- The, the newspaper rack, which is new, it's still the traditional color that this particular company's using. Does this require that as they put new racks in, they convert the color or they can use that current color and then replace them seven years down the road? Because if that's the case, they're already continuing with their current color with a new-style rack, which is, and I'll give you the specific location. I looked at it because it was a new style. I don't know if it's more secure, whatever the case may be, but it's the same color that this current newspaper is using throughout the city.
By virtue of the fact that the ordinance still is not in effect, but it will be very shortly, that they're still being done in the old traditional styles and colors, when they begin to replace, they will be required to replace with the new size, color scheme. So when, once it finally is published and it takes effect, then those new ones will be required. And the city is going to begin permitting with the barcoding very shortly, which will then establish who has legal ones out there right now.
Right.
Will remove all the bad ones that aren't legal. And then they'll begin the process of elimination and reducing the number. And then as they begin to replace, they'll be replacing in the new colors and new scheme.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Well, I should leave well enough alone, but I can't. You know what, I appreciate this, Councilman Smith, and it's a little, you know, I appreciate that you ended up having another meeting with the committee to talk about the color issue and, but if you all remember, that was what I wanted to send back to the committee. And that was one of the votes that I could, the rest of you would not support me on and refused to even allow that color issue to go back to the committee. Because I said, "I think there's still some room to compromise." And so I love it that you did it anyway, but I could not get any support here that day. That was my amendment to send that color thing back to the committee to see if we might work a little bit longer, didn't see what the urgency was and maybe you could bring people back together. So you did it anyway without council directing you, but it's a little upsetting that that's exactly what I wanted to have happen and I couldn't get any support on the floor that day to do it. So you did it anyway, so good job.
All right, we have the matters before us, items seventeen and eighteen, as Mr. Smith has explained them. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Clerk?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on Tuesday, February 1st, to leave at noon for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused.
Councilmember Cardenas also requests to be excused on Tuesday, January 18th, to leave at 12:40 for city business. That also meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused on that date.
Councilmember Ledlow requests to be excused for today's meeting and for January 18th, 19th, and 21st for personal business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Ledlow is excused and good luck to him and his wife.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused on Wednesday, February 16th, to leave at noon for personal business. Meets council policy.
That excuse is approved.
And Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Friday, January 21st, for city business. That also meets council policy.
Mr. Padilla is excused.
That clears desk, Madam President.
All right, members, are there announcements? Any announcements, member? Yes, Mr. Labange?
I just think it's a very important holiday on Monday for Dr. Martin Luther King. There'll be a great parade in the south part of the city, which I'm sure several members of council will be involved with that parade. And we had a wonderful celebration in Mayor Hans' press office this morning with community leaders throughout Los Angeles to salute African-American History Month. And the Author Study Club of Los Angeles came out this wonderful book, Trailblazers of Los Angeles, that talked about the history and contributions of African-Americans. And it was a wonderful way to start the morning, to start the weekend of a great parade to remember the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. So invite everyone to attend the parade on, down on Dr. Martin Luther King. And it ends, starts on Western, as Councilmember Parks spoke last week. It starts on Western, goes west through to Crenshaw South and ends in Lamar Park, LeMurk Park with the festival. All are invited to attend. I believe it's 11:00 a.m. that the parade starts, I'm not sure on that. Consult your local listings, as they say. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any other announcements? Are there any adjourning motions? We do have adjourning motions, so could I ask everyone in the audience to please rise? Mr. Labange?
Yes, members, I ask you to adjourn a member of Richard Zesbo, leaves his wife Shirley and one daughter, who lived a fruitful life, recently passed. And also I ask that we adjourn a member of Bernard Gilson, who built the chain of markets throughout Southern California, including one in very own Silver Lake. He was a dynamic individual who was able to create a marketing area where they built very high-quality food in, in an area throughout the city. His first store, I believe, was in the San Fernando Valley. Bernard Gilson lived to be the beautiful age of 84. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I would like us to adjourn today in honor of Dolores Nikodinov of San Pedro. Maybe some of you read it in the paper. She was killed in a car accident Wednesday at the age of 48, on the way to watch her daughter, Angela Nikodinov, two-time bronze medalist in the U.S. Figure Skating Championships. The accident took place in Portland while the entire family was traveling to the competition. And her mother's death really has shocked and saddened the entire skating community. One of the pair skater, John Baldwin, said, "This is just devastating. Her mother is always in such good spirit. She always came to the rink with Angela. She was real proud of her and she was enjoying her daughter's success." Our thoughts go to Angela, who's a very talented skater. Unfortunately, she's had some rough things happen to her. She tragically lost her coach, who she was very close to in 2001, and this is certainly another terrible tragedy in her life. Someone else said, "Her parents are her life. She's incredibly close to them. Angela and her mother had the most infectious laugh, the same laugh, and that that voice is silent is so shocking. No one deserves this." Our thoughts and prayers go out to Angela and her father, Nick, and all of us in San Pedro were very proud that they were members of our community.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I ask you to join me in adjourning this meeting in honor of Harding B. Eklund, father of Pat Eklund, mayor of Novato, California, who is the president of the League of California Cities this year. She lost her father over the recent holidays when he sustained a skull fracture from a fall in his backyard and developed complications while in the hospital recovering from the injury. He's survived by his wife, his daughter Pat, and two sons. We send the family our condolences and best wishes. Also, colleagues, ask that we adjourn in memory of Dorothy Hazel Clark, born February 23rd, 1922, and passed away this last December 23rd. She was married to Walton Clark for 57 years, was a mother of six boys and two girls, including Judy Clark, one of our council vote clerks, as well as 17 grandchildren and one great-grandchild, a dedicated Sunday school teacher. She also left her children as they were growing older to work alongside her husband at Clark's Furniture Company until they both retired. She was an active member of the Pasadena community and that region as a member of the Pasadena Parks Commission from 1957 to 1960. She was a PTA president at Edison Elementary School in Altadena, PTA president at Elliott Junior High School, and PTA president at John Muir High School as well. Despite threatening and harassing phone calls in the 60s, Dorothy and her husband were successful plaintiffs, along with Mr. and Mrs. Spangler and Mr. and Mrs. Rosker against the Pasadena School Board in the matter of de facto segregation. So clearly, an extended part of the city family, but we know where the care and concern for others comes from in Judy's heart. Ask that we adjourn in her memory.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Any other members? Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I ask that you join me in adjourning in memory of the father of my staff member, Evan Lindcove. His father, Arnold Lindcove, passed away on January 10th, just this year, of kidney cancer. He was 73 and he had a very successful career in Louisiana as a businessman in several iterations. And then ultimately, in 1988, he was appointed by Governor Buddy Romer to be the Secretary of Economic Development for the state of Louisiana. He served in that capacity successfully and then went back into the private sector. He was very involved in his community. He was served for a number of years as president and a member of Board of Trustees of their synagogue in Shreveport and was very involved in a number of other foundations in the community. He is survived by his wife, Virginia, his daughter Rebecca, his son Stephen, his son Evan and Evan's wife Jane, sister-in-law Barbara, his sister Jan, his brother-in-law Warren, and three grandchildren and many other relatives and friends.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Madam President, request for adjourn in memory of, first, the victims of La Conchita, the victims that passed away in that mudslide in Ventura County, and the deceased Michael, Anthony, Elvis, Vanessa Bryson, Christina Kennedy, John Morgan, Patrick Rodnick, Michelle Wallet, Hannah Wallet, Raven Wallet, Paloma Wallet, and Chris Womack. May those victims, the residents of La Conchita, rest in peace. My second adjourned motion is for Dawn Michelle Coombs-Fishler, passed away December 19th. Dawn was born June 1st, 1966, in New Jersey. She resided in the San Fernando Valley for more than half her life. She passed the wage, passed away at the age of 38 in West Hills. She was a beloved mother, wife, aunt, sister, granddaughter, daughter, and friend. Dawn was a special education aide for the L.A. Unified School District, active member of the community, having been recognized for her efforts to promote traffic safety awareness and children's causes by the L.A. USD Board and the Los Angeles City Council. Dawn was the founder of TARA program, Traffic Awareness Really Achieve Safety, which was developed in memory of Tara Coombs, the sister of the fifth-grade self-esteem mentor who ran the TARA program. The purpose of TARA's program is to heighten traffic safety awareness in and around elementary schools throughout the district and involved direct student involvement. This is accomplished by a select group of fifth-grade students who worked side by side with an adult coordinator. In 2002, I recognized Dawn as my Pioneer Women of the Year for the Third Council District. And the Los Angeles City Council honored her and her wonderful and very hard-working 33 fifth-grade students in council just recently. Dawn was an active member of my community posse and was very proud to be of assistance to her community and to the people of Los Angeles. The class of 2004 had 59 students. Their fifth-grade traffic crusade was the largest and best ever. The fifth-grade teachers that Dawn worked so closely with are Mr. Loretta and Mr. Carpeta, Mr. Kim, and Ms. Feinstein. Dawn was also a reading mentor, special assistant to the principal and esteemed program coordinator at Woodlake Avenue and Moontree School, Tiger Club coach, as coach and assistant manager of the teams of the Wilton Hills Little League. No job was too small or too difficult and her passion and determination knew no bounds. She wanted to make the world a better place and a safer place for children. She will be missed and loved by her friends, her family, and the community. She is survived by her husband Marvin, her sons Devon, age 15, and Josh, age 11. Mother, Loretta Lick, father Dave Coombs, who has now resided in Georgia, brother Robert, and two sisters Joyce and Janet. May Dawn Michelle Coombs-Fishler rest in peace. And it was with sadness that I heard about her passing. She was a, a real pillar in our community and the first pioneer woman that I was able to acknowledge as a, as a council member. A memorial service for Dawn will be tomorrow. A memorial service for Dawn will be held at Woodlake Elementary School Auditorium on Saturday, January 15th, from 2:00 to 3:30. All are welcome to pay respects. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Clerk, call the roll. We're adjourned.